Meeting to order. The Municipal Planning Commission. Agenda additions. So I'd like to put one on. New business eight point two, I guess we'll put it under.
Yeah, I'm not a man.
Land use by law. And vertical farming. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get somebody to move it? Mr. Clark, all those in favor? That's carried. Okay, minutes, January twenty fifth County Municipal Planning Committee. Commission, anybody get a chance to peruse those? Mr. Gander, you're good with them?
Yes.
No errors or omissions, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Now, business arising, development officers report five point one. Yes, I guess you're right. We'll quickly do introductions. Marlene, you want to start?
Gander, board member.
Gander, Paul McKay, board member.
Larry Clark, board member.
Dave Grover, board member.
Justin Stevens, good afternoon.
Les Stuhlburg, board member.
James Nyberg, new chair.
Rick Teal, director of planning and development.
Richard, director of municipal services.
Michelle Hoover, legislative assistant.
Rich Fitzgerald, development officer.
Your name? Okay, there we go. Thanks Candace. Thank you for that. Getting ahead of myself, and now we'll go on to development officers report. Actually, hold on. Candace, would you like us to deal with your matter in front of us right away? Or we probably, is the board okay with doing that? We can move to six point one. I'm seeing nodding of the heads is you guys are okay with that? Okay, so who's taking that? Okay, page six, and we'll go six point one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this application is to consider a variance application to allow for a covered deck as in addition to an RV being used as a dwelling unit in the Resort Residential Community Service District. Background and discussion, the subject property is located in the Roshan Sands Heights subdivision. Currently, the applicant has a valid permit to use an RV as a dwelling on the subject property. The property, sorry, the proposed use of an addition of a deck to an RV is a permitted use in this district. However, the applicant is proposing to use a covered deck. Section seventy six point four of the county land use by law states that in the Roshan Sands Heights subdivision, in addition to a recreational vehicle, shall be limited to a ground level uncovered deck. So that's what we're considering is they're applying for variance to that rule to be allowed to have a deck covering. The application was referred to county staff and no permits were received pertaining to the proposed development. These are the pictures of the deck next to the RV. Worth mentioning that the deck was purchased from an adjacent property. It was attached to an RV on that property, but that that landowner has since built a house. So that's where this deck came from. So section twenty three point one of the land use by law states that the development authority may decide on a development permit application, even though the proposed development does not comply with this by law. If, in the opinion of the Municipal Planning Commission, the proposed development would not newly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially materially interfere with or affect the use of enjoyment of or value of neighboring person's plant. So recommendation, in the opinion of the development authority, proposed application for a deck should be granted, subject to the covered portion of the deck being removed. Railing around the outside of the deck is permitted, but no covering of the deck is allowed. Therefore, the development authority approves application DP twenty three zero zero nine for a ground level deck with no roof structure, subject to the following conditions. List of conditions there, and that concludes my
report. Question for the applicant. We've run into this in the past where there's a ground level deck or or some sort of ancillary add on to an RV, and then the RV disappears for extended periods, and then it's no longer compliant. So if, is it your intention to leave this RV there full time year round?
Yeah, I've been there for several, we've had a lot for almost seven years, and it's been there full time throughout the winter too for four years, I think. We removed it in winter just to sort of our farm, but other than that, it does.
I have a question for for staff. Is there a way to link the time limit on this? So an RV permit is not a permanent permit. It has to be reapplied every two years, correct?
That's correct.
So is there a way to link this to the RV permit so that we don't run into that situation where someone decides to go a different direction, remove the RV, and we have this variance sitting out in the middle of nowhere?
Our land use by law does allow the development authority to put a time limit on on the development permits. So we could, in theory, coincide the end date with expiry of the RV. So at that time, they would be able to, if they wished, to reapply. But at that time, MPC would also have the opportunity to evaluate and decide then whether or not to allow it.
And when is that RV permit deadline coming up over?
I believe it's June of twenty twenty four.
Yeah, we just did it this year.
So Candace, is this something that removing the cover is going to be a problem for you guys?
He purchased it from the adjacent landowner, and he had it up for several years, so we were he had approval for it, so we weren't even under the assumption that it would even an issue. And then they, when we bought, we had to bring it back over to our place with a time constraint because they were building. And so we moved it over, so the covered deck is kind of why we purchased it, thinking that there was no issue with it already. So, and it would it would kind of be pointless for us to have it.
So was it approved to administration? Was it approved, or was it one of these ones that they thought they had approval for a covered deck?
I don't have that permit, but that clause has been in the land use by law since it was written that the ground level decks were limited, or sorry, the RV was limited to a ground level deck as an extension.
So the individual that you got it from may have had a permit for a deck, but not for a covered on a deck. So we haven't, we've had a lot, a lot of pushback from your neighbors up there, the fact that, so when someone says they had it approved, they may not always be a hundred percent. So what's the board's flavor? Mr. Grover?
Well, if she would take the the top off the dime, that would be a favor, because it would be in permitted use, but if it's going to be avoiding on it with the top on it, I'll be working it out.
Well, the proposal right now is that the deck, the cover has to come off the deck. That's the only way. We can't approve it without that. Because Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
We, we can. My understanding of of how this is worded is we can approve that variance to allow the covered deck, but it would require a variance. That's why it's before us. If it was a ground level deck, our staff would have already dealt with it. It wouldn't have been a variance, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, just to fill in that, that is correct. In this particular case, it would be, obviously, yes or no. So numerically, that translates to a hundred percent. And but you still have to pass the test. So if MPC is willing to grant a variance, we have to go back to that test that's listed in the RFD and talk about how does it interfere or potentially interfere with other uses of adjacent properties? How does it fit with the character of the area?
Go ahead. And that's where the issue arises, is we have in the past had quite a few complaints from homeowners who don't want to look at such structures in their neighborhood. They kind of refer to us cattle shelters and things. And because there's no set designer, whatever, it's just what everybody would have to slap together to put by their, where their RV. So that's generally why they're not approved is because of the opposition from the homeowners.
So if I could, if this was to be appealed by an adjacent landowner, it would almost be a hundred percent slam dunk because that's a hundred percent approval, and it goes directly against our land use by law.
So I guess first I have to go back to the scenario. Which version would be approved? If you're saying if someone was to appeal a decision today with a variance amount, the cover is staying. But certainly, any variance it's attached to, even if a permitted use, does open up appeal rights to adjacent property owners or any affected party, that'd be a determination by the STAB or the panel holding the appeal hearing. It's not a slam dunk. Basically, STAB has to do the same job that MPC has to and satisfy that exact same test and be able to articulate and say, this is why in this particular case, we think a variance is appropriate or not appropriate.
Mr. Clark?
It does put us back to this whole thing with variances in that area. And if we approve this one, we're going to have a hard time not approving the next one, the one after, and the one after. So it's one of those issues of that if we're going to open it up now, I think we need to take a look at that whole land use by law piece in that area, because we've had requests not to have, we've had complaints. And I feel that you purchased it from somebody, but I mean, I think what we're, it probably was a deck and not a covered deck. And it's for the whole area in itself.
So I have a question to administration. Is this fault, we changed the the development permit application to, did that change this one? Or was that previous to that? Where the development permit was doubled if the the project was started ahead of time? This application was received previous to that? So I mean, go ahead, Mr. Gender.
Unfortunately, this is a situation of where we as a community, we never caught this prior to being, I guess it was an unpermitted one. So it's something that, like Mr. Clark said, that if we, okay, this one is going to open up a whole can of worms for everyone else, saying, okay, why not? We have had to deal with some of these, and I'll say this one is very decent looking covering on it. We have it to deal with someone's in the past that were not really to the taste, but everyone has their different tastes. I'll have to say, unfortunately, no, I do not feel that we can bend the rules on here.
I got less than that.
Okay, then I've got Mr. Stevens. As discussed, one of the complaints was RVs and these ancillary structures versus homes. And I, I get both sides of this argument because those rules historically have changed and haven't been consistent. So I sympathize for both parties on, on, on that argument. But in this instance, I think the rules have been relatively consistent. And I'm very much opposed to moving the goalposts on people. We've advertised, this is what's allowed, ground level decks are allowed. And and to focus on all these one-off variances, we are picking a side. I, I hope that everyone's informed when they purchase property on what they can and can't do. I'm not so naive to think that that always is the case. But I would like the direction to be more consistent with what we've advertised as allowed. So I will somewhat reluctantly make the motion that we go a staff recommendation that we approve if the the roof structure is removed.
So, Mrs. Ryan, I'll give you the little bit if you want to try and give us anything that you're thinking.
So if you're going to do that, if you're going to suggest that we remove the roof from ours, there are four other ones sitting out there that have not been approved. So if you're going to be asked to it, then I think it should be straight across the board, and everybody else just have to do it as well.
And absolutely, and we totally understand that. Unfortunately, our enforcement is slow, but it's coming. So unfortunately, we are aware of some of those, and we have sent some letters, and some of those people have been reluctant to go that way. And then unfortunately, we are going to have to be the big bad guy and go out and do that. That is just the way that it's going to happen. There's, it has come, and we're getting pressure from both sides. There's people that want to, and there's people that don't, but the rules say they're not supposed to.
Right. There's one that's two doors down from us that within the MPC meeting in October, the trailer was too old. So she had proposed that she would, she was, they were planning a building within two years, and nothing was ever mentioned about her covered deck. So at that time, I think it really, yeah.
Think we're fairly aware of that, and there's been some discussion on that. What we can only deal with what is brought in front of us, some of that other stuff we know about and we're dealing with on the backside. Mr. Stevens, again.
One more question for staff. Outside the box thinking, so it isn't a total loss for the applicant on at least the materials. Is there some allowance, and I realize it would take some work for freestanding pergolas or or something along those lines? Is that allowed in our land use by law?
Three dollar word from a five dollar guy. Pergola. That is something that they could discuss later on, and I think you can, you can talk to them, go forward. What Mr. Stevens is talking about is having some sort of freestanding structure outside of that. But I, that has to come also, I think, with the house. I don't think you put that with the trailer, but I maybe.
I'm trying to look at the structure we're looking at right now and see that that qualifies as a pergola with you a heck of a stretch.
I am not suggesting that this qualifies. I am trying to give the applicant an ult, since they've purchased all this materials, if it could be reused.
It's probably something I don't want to go off the top of my head. You have to double check. Does that also qualify as a covering, even though it's like a semi covering with a fabric stretch part? Depending, I realize they vary from design to design.
So that's a sidebar, but not something we're dealing with today. All right, so we have a motion in front of us now to say that we will approve the deck to be in conjunction with the current trailer permit and that the roof will come off. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? I'm seeing nodding of heads. Yes, I will call that question. And all those in favor? Okay, that is carried. So timeline to have that off.
As generous as we could, it's not the time of year, I wouldn't think, to be wanting to do that. So I talked with Craig, but I generally, we give, we work with the applicant and make a timeline that works for everyone.
So the permit will not be approved until that does come off?
Or we could make it approve, approve the permit and make a condition that the top be removed by?
Okay, I'll leave that in your guys' hand to deal with that.
Good, Mr. Chairman, I think the commission's made their decision on it. It's just a question of how fast we would seek compliance.
Yeah, that's all, and just to give them some guidance. Okay, okay, perfect. All right, we're done that one. Five point one, we'll go back to the development officers report. Page three of our package, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we did things a little differently this year with our development permits, kind of our year end review to look back at how the permits we received, how they kind of played out. So what I've done is I've broken them up into groups. Detached dwellings, second detached dwelling on the same parcel, addition to an existing structure, ancillary building, standard size, and then oversized, and so on. You can see on the pie chart how the numbers kind of broke out and what the biggest percentage of our applications were. So overall, we received one hundred and fifteen applications or processed one hundred and fifteen applications last year. I've only used one hundred and thirteen in the chart because one application was abandoned, and the other one was just for a variance and had no development portion to it. So as you can see, the largest number of permits we processed was for the RV as dwelling unit, followed by the ancillary building, standard size. And it kind of breaks it all out. You can see the, like the pie chart there kind of breaks it out into, so it just gives you an idea of what, what type of permits we're handling on a regular basis.
Detached dwelling is the biggest, right? Am I reading that right?
No, the RV is dwelling unit is the biggest at twenty eight applications. The next was
I'm looking at money and value of the purple.
So the the next chart, if you get over to that one. This evaluation, so every development permit application that we take in, we ask the applicant to put a value figure as to what they estimate that development is worth. So with that one, you see that the value of the development permits that we get in, monetary value, detached dwellings definitely make up the biggest part of the pie. And then it breaks it down through, so you just get an idea as to, you know, from the county standpoint, taxation base, how these development permits, what they, what they mean to the county and the bottom line, I guess, is kind of how I broke this one up, just to give you an idea. I think the one thing that I noted was the the number one development permit that we received is one of the least valued improvements. So you're spending the most time, but you're getting the the less return on that, that development.
And those RVs as a dwelling unit is, that doesn't include the RVs that we are giving a permit to? For temporary, right, that doesn't include the temporary RVs? And how many of those are there?
We're over a hundred of those, I believe, last year.
And the planning and development department takes care of that. You guys are the ones that, in conjunction with the are behind this.
I don't think that one's a particularly labor intensive venture when it's in a free online.
I figured you'd chime in. That would be a valid assumption. All right, no, I just, I just was. Go ahead, Mr. Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Andrew, if we could just scroll up to the next table, if you can finish it all on. Fifteen subdivision applications total for twenty twenty two, which is, looking back to the previous three, probably less, around two thirds of what we ran in the previous two years. So ordinarily, we're more in the twenty to twenty two applications per given year. The general trends, it's basically a combination of largely first parcel loads and the occasional farmstead removal, and sometimes even the first parcel loads are getting a little bit larger than that five acre size. So you can't just go by the total acreage to get a pure sense of what's going on. So most of these applications, the pro subdivision does go through, it's kind of like a bit of a conveyor belt. So what you're seeing on the chart are the ones that Municipal Planning Commission staff have dealt with and disposed of in the course of twenty twenty two. Through twenty twenty three, landlords are still working on the conditions, getting a surveyor involved, so there's still follow up work. Before all, as you see on this chart, is registered land titles. Similarly, from twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, we could still have approval out from those two years that are still working their way through satisfying the conditions and then getting on to registration.
So is there a thought pattern? Because pretty much the subdivisions don't start till March. Is that it? You know, is that normal for every?
I think so. You know, it's could honestly from, and I think you see this across other development permits. And you'll probably see this if we were to get an awesome first half March, springwise weather. People start coming back outdoors, they start thinking about their properties and their yards, and the next thing you know, we've got tech garage permits left, right, and center, and tends to be a trend, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens. I was just wondering if we were having any issues with the one applicant for subdivision twenty twenty two dash fifteen. Are they meeting all their conditions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's biased.
So I sense it's been set up on that one. Just that one will not take two years to get through its registrations. I know there's some keenness, and I'm seeing that happen right now. So it's out of the hands of us locally, handed over to our surveyor, transfer document is in as of last Friday to land titles, and we are on the faster stream for registrations compared to other real estate transactions, because we get to go down the
I had to get my two cents in on that. All right, go ahead.
So do you have any questions coming from the the reports? If not, I'll hand it over to Craig. He dealt with the subdivision portion of it.
Okay, just I have one other question on the RV as dwelling units. The majority I would venture to stay safe would be in the northwest part of our county.
That would be a valid assumption.
All right, no, I just I just was. Go ahead, Mr. Teal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So uh, Andrew, if we can just scroll up to the next table, if you can finish it all on. Fifteen subdivision applications total for twenty twenty two, which is uh, looking back to the previous three years, probably less. Around two thirds of what we ran in the previous two years. So ordinarily, we're more in the twenty to twenty two uh, applications per given year. Uh, the general trends, uh, it's basically a combination of largely first parcel loads. And the occasional farmstead removal and uh, sometimes uh, even the first parcel loads are getting a little bit larger than that five acre size. So you can't just go by the total acreage to get a pure sense of what's going on. Uh, so most of these applications, uh, the pro subdivision does go through. Uh, it's kind of like a bit of a conveyor belt. So what you're seeing on the chart are the ones that municipal planning commission and staff have dealt with and. And disposed of in the course of twenty twenty two, then through twenty twenty three landlords are still working on the conditions. Getting a surveyor involved. So there's still follow up work before all of what you see on this chart is registered land titles. Similarly, from twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, we could still have uh, approval out from those two years. They're still working their way through satisfying the conditions and then getting on to registration.
So is there a. Thought pattern? Because pretty much the subdivisions don't start till March. Is that it? You know, you know, it's the is that normal for every?
I think so. You know, it's could honestly from, and I think you see this across other development permits. And uh, you'll probably see this if we were to get an awesome first half March, uh, spring wise weather. People start coming back outdoors. They started thinking about their properties and their yards. The next thing you know, we've got tech garage permits. Uh, left, right and center. Yeah, tends to be a trend, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens. I was just wondering if we were having any issues with the one applicant for subdivision, uh, twenty twenty two dash fifteen. Are they meeting all their conditions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's biased.
So I sense it's been set up on that one. Uh, just that one will not take two years to get through its registrations. I know there's some keenness and I'm seeing that happen. Right now, so it's out of the hands of us locally. Uh, handed over to our surveyor, uh, transfer document is in as of last Friday to land titles. And we are on the faster stream for registrations compared to other real estate transactions because we get to go down the subdivision side of the line. But we're still two and a half months out before we see an actual title for that new parcel in the county's name.
Again, is that in the northwest area of the?
It is in the southeast corner.
Any other questions, concerns? Do you have anything else for us? We're good. Mr. Clark, you're nodding your head. You'll give me a receipt for information on that. All those in favor? That is carried. Good. Thank you. New business. Eight point one, Locom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so we received a referral from our neighbor to the west. Uh, and we share the town area they're working on is called the south of eleven. Of east and south of eleven outline plan stretched all the way from our shared border to all the way to the Joffrey plant where highway eleven. Chomps down and kind of squeezes off a portion of Locom County where it's south of highway eleven and north of Red Deer River. Uh, so the county has been working on updating that large land and it's split into two parts. This is the east part, so it only takes draws a line from Haynes. Uh, and has a west half from that point to the west. And this part is from Haynes to east. Or sorry, to the west, all the way back to the east to our boundary. Uh, it uh, is attached and I do want to point out a couple of things about it. It's certainly it's not new compared to the two thousand and one plan. It identified same residential opportunities that are uh, in the far east area that I flagged in the R T as a point of concern. The. Plan seems to have enough policies and uh, uh, teeth in it. For them to deal with our only concern. And the big concern I see is the fact that the Nevis plant is right adjacent to the plan area boundary. Uh, even though that plant is going through uh, maybe a decommission or a reclamation right now. It is one of the few large blocks of industrial land that we haven't designated already. And whoever ends up owning that, or if they by some choice chose to reactivate the plant. Uh, we don't know which way that's gonna go. Most likely, the future of that borderland that we have with this plan area in Locom County is gonna be industrial. Uh, the plan from Locom County, though, even though it flags residential within one mile of that location. It's not a hundred percent a guarantee to the landlord. Uh, so when you read there the policies in section four, the the proposed A S B. It flags that these are lands that county council, Locom County Council would be prepared to consider. But there's still a steep test. So it's not a slam dunk that we're gonna see residential within that one mile area. It says that if you want to go through the effort and prove out and demonstrate that residential is appropriate. And you provide sufficient buffer in transition, we might approve. A certainty if you're trying to encourage residential development, but nonetheless, that's how Locom County has phrased their policies. I think that that does offer a little bit of moderation from the concern that I'm raising is in the future. If uh, I want landlords within one mile of the Nevis plant wants to come forward, they'll be able to look at this again to see what's happening. On the site hasn't been developed as a sour gas plant again, which hasn't had a significant setback. Hasn't been converted to a light industrial park as part of a reclamation plan, which maybe residential could be accommodated. Uh, Mr. Chairman, our recommendation is that we flag the issue in a correspondence in a letter to Locom County so they can take that into account. In their upcoming public hearing on March ninth, I believe. Yes.
So I have that question as well. With the area structure plan, does that affect the fact that we have a couple of um, small developments just below that that are? Recreation. Commercial type developments now. I don't see that being anything affected, but if is the area structure plan. With traffic studies, et cetera, et cetera, because it will increase the traffic. It shouldn't affect the county of Locom because it's all on our side or for the most part. But is that something that could be uh, affected?
I so yes, so if I get the scenario correctly, if they go ahead with, you can see on the screen, the far right hand side, that yellow area. That's the area that's very close. And Andrew, do you know where the Nevis plant is? Thanks for that. So if that area was to develop as residential, highway eleven is still subject to A T's control. And those applicants would be expected to do an area traffic impact assessment. To Gilbert's transportation satisfaction. So that could include looking at the junction of highway eleven to twenty one. To see if there's a negative too much of a negative impact in addition to their own access point or new access or new public road coming directly off highway eleven.
And by this map, I don't see. How far does that go up? That doesn't go up to the Shadrone plant. So this is just something. Yep, no, I'm. Yeah, but I mean, and that's nothing we can do about it. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a stumbling block going forward. Cause there is there's two possibilities there that are are currently operating, but I think both have tons to expand. Go ahead, Mr.
Well, I would like uh, to make a motion that the county respond to Locom County uh, with um. Just a note of uh, concern highlighting uh, the buffer zone between our industrial area and their residential area. Make sure that's clear. There is that there.
Is that clear for administration?
Yes, I believe it's pretty much mirroring the recommendation on the R T if I if that's the intent.
Any questions, any concerns? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. And all those in favor? That's carried. Eight point two. So we had a little bit of discussion earlier in the um. Egg service board about vertical farming. I was at a uh, law seminar where they had brought up. Vertical farming and farming of. Insects for protein. One of the issues that was brought up at that seminar was that they had allowed a vertical farm inside an urban area. These uh. Insects didn't have the pro proper, the the building didn't have the proper um, containment. They got out. Contaminated the neighbors um. Product in their warehouse and also um, a number of vehicles in the parking lot. That were part of the um. Working staff of neighboring buildings around. Do we have anything in our land use by law speaking to vertical farming? And what about the use of that vertical farming for? Insects. And 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 Craig, Craig, I'm not necessarily, we don't necessarily need to have anything. I just, I would like it brought back maybe to the next meeting to have a little bit more discussion about.
Well, you know, I'll just keep it brief, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so just so that you're not worried overnight about uh, so on, starting of a large bug farm. I think the excrement getting out was kind of the more disgusting part of the story for me personally. Uh, so I actually went looking at the definition of agricultural operation. Our our definition. In the land use by law is a little bit longer than what's in the agricultural protection. Agricultural Operations Protections Act, uh, which was a definition that the M G A uses to define what do we mean by an agricultural operation. Uh, so it's still pretty traditional. It deals with our traditional livestock, our traditional grains. It does not cover insects. Uh, so when you ask what's in our land use by law right now, someone wants to come in tomorrow with Rich nine and say, hey, we'd like to start a June beetle farm. We'd be looking at this definition and saying you don't fit. And our land use bottle is structured so that we do try to anticipate new uses coming. It's just why we create new definitions. Uh, but we also use the definitions to say if you don't fit, you don't need a definition. And the answer is automatically no. You stop here. We're not giving a development permit because if it's not allowable use that councils agreed to, we can't issue a development permit. That usually triggers a discussion about a land use pilot. So uh. Subject to unless the province has slipped in. Uh, beetles are now considered livestock. So there is a specialized livestock reference in our definition. Uh, and in the British definition, uh, that would be kind of a loophole because we we cross reference something like. In terms of the vertical farming element, that's more of how you are building a structure to support agriculture. That could include a large number of. The traditional agriculture that you see in the definition. It could be the growing of lettuce. And we're pretty hands off when it comes to telling you how to build a hog barn or a farm building. So there's some things that are already covered in our land use model. Is there room for being more specific? Most likely, is it something to uh, that we probably have time for? I think the answer is yes.
Um, and my my concern was how the lawyers referred to it as vertical farming. And how it fell under that definition. So I would just like to have a little bit more information for our education and egg service board's education as far as where we're at. And go forward because um. This was my understanding inside an urban setting in Calgary, so or. Uh, so I was led to believe later on. Uh, or a municipality just outside of Calgary's. It was in southern Alberta is what I got. I mean, that I guess that could also be Lethbridge or there's a number of bigger centers as well. What's the board's thought on this? Where are we at? Would we like to have some definitions in place and go forward to? Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
I I have no concerns with getting more information brought back to us on this regard. At a basic level. It it's like anything we deal with, you should have as much freedom to do on your property. Provided that you don't interfere with your neighbors. And when you're talking about. Insects that may be considered pests and decimate crops. Well. It's kind of like the conversation we had earlier with wild boars. Maybe some added controls need to be in place before you start uh. Comingling wild boars with with your herd, because if they get out, they decimate. The land, the landscape around it. So. Having some controls in place makes some sense.
My little bit of information I had looked into was that. You need six hundred and eighty three thousand crickets to make up for one beef cow. So. That's a lot of. A lot of crickets. And I and my comment back was six hundred and eighty three crickets in a canola field. Or one cow is no comparison. Those crickets would, if they were eating, the canola would destroy it, right? Where the cow.
We are about to have a very heated argument right now. I would argue that no amount of crickets into the tens of millions will ever replace that one beef cow. As I cannot. I cannot disagree with you anymore vigorously.
Fair enough. I will concede that.
If you raise an A S B, do was the timeline set for information coming back at that?
Uh, no, just uh, just coordinate, just uh, more than if you guys could have that conversation. I don't want to get lost in a loophole if one gets us there and one doesn't. No, just what if you can bring it to the next meeting or if it doesn't work, then just put it on for the next meeting so that at least we don't forget about it.
Sure, I can tell you since we moved up the next meeting to be a week earlier, that it probably won't make it. Could we set a target for within the next quarter?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's on there, that's good. Is everybody okay with that? Hey, Dave?
Yeah.
Dave, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to your guys.
For information.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Okay. Mr. Stover? You're gonna take us into camera?
I can't do that.
All those in favor?
Okay.